....................................
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Bourbon County Commission Meeting, November 29. Looks like we've got a nice crowd here today. Hope you're all not angry. Anyway. Approval minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the last commission meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Also the minutes from the work session.
Eric Bailey, Road and Bridge Report, please. I don't remember what it was. Terrible. Morning, morning.
Morning.
What's the new Road and Bridge? Anything?
A little bit, not a lot, but a little.
Good.
Sidewalk. As you can see, we're moving forward with the sidewalk. There is a dip in the sidewalk. The dip is supposed to be there. That's for our ADA ramp. So, a little joke on that. We've received multiple inquiries on that, so...
I just assumed your transit wasn't working.
No, it's working just fine, so...
Operator error.
Operator error, like that and better, yeah.
I gave him a hard time this morning.
So anyhow, sidewalk. First part is in. We'll get the parking and curb in, hopefully this week, weather permitting. I think we've got a little snow scare tonight, or what have you, flurries, or what have you, but they're not predicting much as far as that, so... But anyhow, moving forward with that. Do want to let you know that we are moving to an automated fuel system, so when you get your fuel now, you'll actually have a card that will... You'll use and type in your information for your vehicle, and everybody will have their own ID number with their card, so we'll know who's getting fuel and what have you, instead of writing on the ticket.
Good.
That will be... We called yesterday, so hopefully by the end of the year, first of the year, we'll be up and running with that, so...
Good.
Multiple departments are going in together for this system. I still need to check with one to see if they're willing to participate or not, so...
Are you still considering sometime in the future going more bulk?
Absolutely. Yeah, want to take this step first to get it in. We're looking at probably another 60,000 or so to go to the bulk, but we'll be able to save that and then some in the long run, so...
Save it probably pretty quick, too.
Yeah, absolutely. It'll be a win-win for everyone. Budget-wise, right now, we need to start with this, and it'll all go together if and when we do decide to go on with the bulk, so... Give you a heads-up on that. Just heads-up to everybody, the landfill will be closed tomorrow from 11:00 to 1:00 for our holiday dinner. Just want to let everybody know that, and we'll open back up around 1:00 o'clock. We are out pothole patching today. Got that going on. Mother Nature is not cooperating very well with us today. We've already got a couple trees down, so we'll attend to them as well and get that cleaned up as we get the calls on them, so... Other than that, do want to visit with you a little bit, but I'm going to ask Terry if she wants to come up here, and we're going to talk some ambulances with you. Give you kind of a handout here. She gave this to me yesterday. Just kind of let you know where we're at on ambulances. We have seven of them, correct?
Correct.
And you can kind of go down through there, but the one that we're wanting to really talk about today is EMS 3. She has pulled it out of service. It is, in the last four days, lost three gallons of antifreeze. And if you look there, they've replaced the head gaskets twice, or repaired head gaskets twice already on that machine, so...
We've put eight gallons of antifreeze in it since the 18th day.
Question is, and they have a quote here, anywhere from 5,000, and it looks like worst-case scenario is in excess of 20,000. Is that kind of...
If we choose to install a long block.
Yeah.
Instead of bulletproofing.
Don't know... We hope to have EMS 1. As you see, it's out of service. Hope to have it backed up and in-service by the end of the week at the very latest, but it could be as early as today. So, that kind of gives you a rundown there with that. I just need to know on EMS 3, whether you want to think about it, whether you want to... Want us to move forward with that, whether you want us to get more quotes, what...
Mike, am I correct in saying Drive Ford Diesel said they could start on it as early as today if we got it to them?
Yes.
If we got the approval?
Is the rest of the vehicle good shape? Is it a good ambulance besides the motor?
Yes.
Considering it's...
It's too funny in work, but I mean, what one don't.
Yeah. So what's your recommendations? They don't have one, do they? They don't have recommendations.
Well, I mean, I don't know. We just got one bid. I mean, we should probably get more than one bid.
Yeah, get more than one bid. Man, is it a recommendation?
I think you need to...
I mean, to consider...
The motor needs to be bulletproof. That's the motor they've had a bunch of trouble with.
Yeah, I would look for recommendations if you think we should fix it or not. That was what I was asking, so...
Yeah. And I got another bid. It's just word of mouth, but...
Right.
$7,300 is what it cost us to do the one in P.C.A. Same truck, same motor, same everything. Cost them $7,300 to do that one. And that was just bulletproof. That was the block, same block, but new heads, studs, you know, everything. It took them bulletproofing.
Well, what's the dollar about here? I don't see a...
It's in the fine print, right up here.
There's so many...
And at 5 to... Let's see, 5 to 15.
15.
Yeah, 5 to 15, that depends on how... They said how much bulletproofing did we want? You know, because there's different levels. So they just kind of gave, without looking at the truck and us knowing for sure what we wanted. And I said, "I want it, or we want it dependable." You know, and go out and start it, run it all day, and not have an issue with it. Not have to worry about having an issue with it. So they talked like it was probably be closer to that 15.
Which is, to me, I mean, I have a bulletproof truck, and 15, I am not going to pay 15 to do it, plain and simple. My vote is a no. I have a truck that's bulletproof, and it did not cost me that much.
Well, one of the things as far as bidding out and looking at different shops, with it being an ambulance, they have to pull the...
I know that.
... front of the truck off, or the other option would be to take the box and the cab off of the frame. So it costs more. It's more in-depth than just a regular pickup truck.
Not that much more. I've talked to another mechanic, so I might mention that table until later.
What's your... What did it cost for yours? Or roughly, I mean, what he said?
Parts? About $2,200 to $2,500.
Do we have the ability to do this in-house?
We don't have the ability to lift the cab off or to remove that part of it. So that's the big downfall there with that.
Well, I think this...
And timeframe is another thing for us, trying to get to it, and I know they...
Their quote is really vague. I mean, what are they going to do for $15,000? They don't... Just call about bulletproof. I mean, that could mean a lot of things. You know, they... I'd like to see more detail quote from two vendors myself, but...
Why don't we work on getting another quote? Bring it back to you next week. We'll try and get ambulances.
EMS 1.
EMS 1, up and going for them, so that way they have EMS 1, and then we'll...
For instance, it says $15,000. Many updates. That's pretty broad. I'd like to see that in more specific detail. Specific details, what are you going to do for this $15,000 on both quotes?
And that'll give you guys an opportunity to go back to them, and we'll reach out and try and get a quote or two as well, and...
Part of that, too, is they would have to actually look at the truck and evaluate it. So that's what cost us money taking it down there.
No, no. I mean, it's a 6-0, correct? The 6-0? Yeah, okay. Every 6-0 that I know of is the same. They're going to be bulletproof the same. So to look at, to tell, to say that, that's nonsense to me. I mean, any mechanic worth a salt is going to be able to tell you how much it costs to bulletproof a truck.
Well, what they was talking about, at looking at it, it has the water leak and it has an oil leak as well. So whether this, what they was wanting to look at it was to see if this bulletproofing was going to...
Fix those issues?
Fix those issues, or if it was going to be something else.
They shouldn't charge you for a bid, though.
They shouldn't.
No.
Just a trip down there and back, you know, or whatever.
The last two, does EMS 4 and EMS 5, are they up and running?
Yes, there are transit vans, that's what we use for transfers.
I mean, are you able to get by right now? Or is it like kind of life-or-death issue?
We're getting by.
Okay.
By the skin of our teeth, but yes, we're getting by.
Okay.
And we'll be much better once they get one.
All right. So what about these trucks that's just sitting and doing nothing? Are there two trucks just somewhere, sitting somewhere?
890 is sitting in the barn.
Okay, what about, and then there should be one more?
And EMS 1 was in the barn. That's the one Eric has now.
Okay.
He said...
EMS 2 is at the fire station.
Is it, was it a... Is 890 sitting there because we...
It says no cot rail.
We have no cot rail.
I understand that, but I mean, why is it... Is it one of those Mercy that we can't sell? Or what are we doing with something just sitting, I guess, my point? Why do we have something just sitting? Does it run?
It runs. We use it as a backup truck.
Okay.
This is out of service, no cot rail. Can you put cot rail on it? I don't know what that means. I guess it's a rail to keep...
Six, so seven, where's the, where's the, where's the next? Where's the seventh truck, I guess?
EMS 2.
We have 890. EMS 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
6 isn't on there. 6 is our newest truck.
6 is an EMS truck, just a pickup, you mean, or...
No, EMS 6 is on here, too. It's down here at the bottom.
It's right, it's right there under...
EMS 4 and 5 not built for 911 calls.
At the bottom. You have EMS 3, and then it's at the bottom.
Okay, I got you, right there.
EMS 6 is...
Okay, right there.
That's our newest truck.
And it's at the ambulance barn, correct?
Yes.
What does that mean, 4 and 5 not built for 911 calls?
They're transit vans.
I see.
Those were the two trucks that were donated to us. One was from Timken, one was from Mercy Foundation that we use for transfers.
So there's five ambulances. One that doesn't have a cot rail, so there's four ambulances. Is that correct? And two are broke.
Correct.
Three, I guess, three are, because 890's no good. So we have three that are good and two that are run.
Correct.
Is 890 no good, or it just doesn't have a cot rail?
It just doesn't, no, it's good. It runs.
It runs, it just needs a cot rail.
It runs, it needs a cot rail.
How big a deal is that? Doesn't sound like a big deal, but I don't know.
I don't know. Is it a big deal to put a cot rail on it?
890 was Mercy's backup, like backup, backup for 10 years. It's very outdated, it's old. It's a 2002, I believe.
2001.
2001, it says here.
2001, okay.
It could be used in dire, you know, mass casualty thing or something. It could be used to...
Again, I'd like to see two quotes, very much in detail.
In detail, okay.
Because it said, a lot of that, many upgrades. That doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, I hadn't seen that.
Yeah. I think these upgrades need to go in very detail. This is what we're going to do for this much money. And like Clifton said, all those engines are the same, so they ought to be able to tell us, setting their office, this is what it going to cost to rebuild this engine, so... Okay, and come back. Is that fair? Thank you. Know what it was, Eric? I was going to ask you something about that road out there, but I'll do it after the meeting.
Okay.
Would you call it Onyx, Onyx meeting? Did on Clifton Road, it's coming apart. I'm joking.
I owe you one on that one.
I've driven on it two or three times.
My question was, that ag that's showing, was that, is that the existing road, or is that ag they added?
That's where we went out with the pothole patcher, because it had come unraveled, and we went through with the pothole patcher and...
So the entire road is...
Not the entire road we do. Pothole patcher.
No, 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 I didn't mean... But the entire road, when I walked some of it, I was just a bit nosey.
Sure.
The ag that's showing through their application, it was existing ag, because it does match the other side of the road. They put more of a seal on it.
Right.
But that didn't match much rock with it or anything.
It has...
I'm just curious.
I forget the name of the, it's a real fine granular that they put in it for traction.
I should have come out and watched, I know that, so...
Yeah. But no, it's not the thick, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's really thin stuff.
Yeah, so we're going to have to see how it holds up, especially when we run snowplows over it.
It's about like...
Yeah, yeah. And it's not as thick as chip and seal and what have you, but it's worth a try to see what it's going to, if it will hold up, and if it don't, then...
We'll learn from it.
That's right. And they tell us that it gives very good traction, but we'll see.
Yeah, I think some of that traction is probably from the previous asphalt with the ag already showing a little bit, so aggregate.
Yeah.
I think that's where your traction's coming from, so, what I saw out there. Let's hope it makes it much better.
And I would be more than willing to go look at it with you, so we can look at the same thing.
We'll do that sometime.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and again, I was just goofing off, so...
Sure, no.
Standing here, just kidding. No, I'm just kidding.
Hey.
Anything else for me? Good? All right. Give me a few minutes.
Okay. That's pretty bad, the county clerk drags us into executive session. How's the boys? Oh, I'm bad. I know, I missed... I miss our boys been to my grandpa's house. Met your boys Christmas Eve. At midnight, we really cut. They said, "My friend, you're one minute." At it's Christmas. We'd get up at midnight. I loved it, dude. It was sweet old boys.
Always fine. Never near it, he's going to pass or something. That's for real back.
I do, too. You can get a price on two back over.
I can bring one, that would be great.
Who's this gentleman here?
Me. I'm Ryan Kinnon.
Ryan Kinnon, come over. I haven't met you, I guess. You're...
Good. Might as well be, we're right this...
Jim Harret, I'm Robert. Nice meeting you. High-powered beating, is that what I'm hearing? Have lots of food out there, mom?
I think so.
You are? What kind?
Cherry, apple, blackberry, peach.
That'd be good. Mikeberry, cola cream is my favorite. And pumpkin, that, I never had a bad piece of that.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome.
Yeah. It'd be good. We don't need nothing else, no turkey or nothing like that, so... Okay, we ready?
Yep.
Ashley, county clerk, would like to have an executive session.
I would like it for an elected personnel for job duties and performance, and I would like the three commissioners, myself, Tiana McElroy, Patty Love, and Sheriff Martin.
What's that list again? Three commissioners, you, and who else?
Tiana McElroy, Patty Love, and Sheriff Martin.
And Sheriff Martin.
Ashley, Tiana, Patty.
How long?
20, 20 minutes.
Okay. All right. Make a motion, go into executive session. Case A 754319B1 to discuss personal matters of non-individual, non-eligible personnel to protect their privacy. Three commissioners, Ashley Shelton, Tiana McElroy, Patty Love, Sheriff Bill Martin. Don't miss anybody?
No mates, no Justin.
20 minutes. We will return here at 9:41. Back to this room at 9:41.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We'll be back in 20 minutes.
Uh, no, it hasn't been, yeah, there goes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No action.
And the reason is Kansas allows local municipalities to waive generally accepted accounting principles and follow what's called the regulatory basis of accounting, which is the basis of accounting which is used in your budget process. Every year you approve a budget for every fund, the receipts and expenditures. This basis of accounting shows compliance with the budgetary laws of Kansas. And you think, well, why wouldn't we want to follow generally accepted accounting principles? And the reason is it's a lot more complicated to follow generally accepted accounting principles because for one thing, and this is the biggest time-consuming thing, is for a municipality to follow GAAP, they have to keep track of fixed assets and record annual depreciation on them. For example, if you buy a new grader, you would book it, you wouldn't show as an expense, it would be shown as an asset, and then over seven years, you'd recognize depreciation expense in your road and bridge fund would have depreciation expense. Well, of course, number one, that takes a lot of time. You fix a road, you gotta depreciate it. You buy a copier, you depreciate it. Whatever you fixed asset you buy, you have to track and depreciate it. And secondly, it's not really, it doesn't follow your budget at all. That is, your budget that you approve every year is concerned about levying taxes and having money available to pay for their necessary expenses. Whereas depreciation, if we followed GAAP, would be shown as expense, but it's not really a cash expense. So that's why most places, well, let me back up. Every place we audit, except for the Fortscott Community College, which can't waive generally accepted accounting principles, follows this regulatory basis of accounting. So it is adverse in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. But the third paragraph on page one is the one that's important, which says, it's called an unmodified opinion, which says, "In our opinion, the financial statement referred to above presents fairly in all material respects the cash and unencumbered cash balance of the county at December thirty-one and the receipt and expenditures for the year then ended in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting." So that's unmodified, that's the highest level we can give on an audit. If there was issues with, for example, payroll, everybody was paid incorrectly, we would have to say, well, except for payroll, which was messed up, it'd be a modified, a modification. But there's no modification. This is an unmodified, clean opinion that these numbers fairly present the activity for the county for the past year. Now, the rest of this, page one and page two, is purely verbiage. A lot of it is required because, number one, we had to have a single audit this year, which is a federal audit based on the level of federal revenues and expenditures you had last year, which adds work to the audit. But the gist of the first paragraph, this opinion, is our unmodified opinion. So if you, I want to touch on pages three and four. This is kind of like the bird's eye view of the county funds. And one thing that really jumps out, well, a couple things, general fund still has a pretty healthy balance at December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. The one thing that really I'm pleased to see is if you go about eight lines from the bottom, the road and bridge fund, starting December, January one, twenty-twenty-one, we had six hundred one dollars and forty-five cents in the road and bridge fund. It had really dropped very tight, very tight. At the end of December, we have three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. We've built that balance back up to a much more healthy balance. I know Jim remembers his days when he was doing road and bridge. It's tough when you are out of money in December, but this year, we're, you built that back up, and that's really, really good news to know. So that's the one thing that really jumps out for you. So starting on page five, and it's just different information required to disclose about the county, the accounting process, the budgetary process. Starting on page nine, though, there's a section called stewardship, compliance, and accountability. With the audit, we're required to verify cash balances, revenues, and expenditures, but we're also required to check for statutory compliance. And this section, starting on page nine into page ten, spells out any statutory violations. And there were a few I need to go over with you this year.
So you think Patty, this is a result from the 2020, flowing over to 21, trying to get things worked out?
Yes.
So this is a repeat violation?
Right, but it's fixed now, we're up to where monthly it's fixed, you're getting that, except for the new accounts that I am working on. That we want to re, wear up.
And I mentioned that the last sentence there, cash was probably reconciled by the end of the year. But it, what did happen throughout the year?
But it should happen monthly.
Yeah, oh, you should be in, you should reconcile within a few weeks at the end of each month, once those bank statements get in.
That's been done all this year, has been done.
2022 has been done all year?
All year, yes.
Okay.
Now, the top of page 10 now was just publications of quarterly statements. I don't think they're all done in time, but are, are they now being done timely, Patty?
Yes, Susan's taken that over and she's done that with the program where she's doing all the expenditures and the.
She combines the treasurer clerk and commissioners reports.
Yes, and so it's saving us money on the publication and it's being done in a timely manner there, so.
Thank you, Susan.
And I take it similar, a similar type report for the KSA 19228 about the itemized statement of sums allowed in excess of $50, is that now being done? Because it wasn't done timely last year.
Patty?
I don't think that's Patty's, that's.
Oh, that's county clerk?
And what is it again, advised?
Well, I'll get the statute to you, I'll, I'll send you the statute. Just commissioners look at every quarter and then publish it, I'll send you the statute.
We do do the quarterly publication for the clerk's office, Susan includes that in, there's commission, treasurer and clerk's reports that all go out with combined in one.
Okay.
And they are being done timely.
Okay, good, thank you.
Then finally, the bottom of page 10 is, there were three accounts that were just disclosed at the sheriff's office. They had been, we weren't aware of them, but there's three different checking accounts for process, serving, conceal and carry and registered offender fees. These accounts, I will say, had been opened years ago and, gosh, I believe even Sheriff Coleman might have been the one that opened them. But it's been many years they're in there and we weren't even aware of it. But when we were aware of it, we went and looked at the accounts to see if there's anything, what was going through them, if there's any problems with them. And as far as the expenses for 2021, there were invoices to support the expenses, there was proper, they were allowable expenses for the sheriff's department, but there were violations of statutes because the fact that they weren't turned, they should be turned over to the county treasurer and then run through the normal county's accounting policies. That is bills, checks signed by the clerk and the treasurer, invoices established for all of them and the treasurer maintaining, keeping track of the account balances. Because since this was not turned in last year, there are these four violations. The first one, the clerk was not able to keep track of the expenses in that fund because they weren't turned in. The second one, the treasurer wasn't able to keep track of the balances in the funds because they weren't turned in. And third, expenses approved by the normal expenditure process, it wasn't done because they weren't turned in. So these four things are the result of them not being turned in. So it's my understanding now that these funds have been turned over to the county. And, but they did result in these violations for 2021.
And those bills closed out those accounts, transferred the money we've set up under the treasurer's account for the three of those.
And have you reviewed all the paperwork that needs on the accounts that's closed out?
I have not had the time to go back into the last seven years on all those accounts. I've got three of them done, but, you know.
But what about last year, haven't got that far?
Well, what I've done is the ones I've done, I started with the smaller ones, I've got them clear, up to date when we close those out and transfer them over. There's still two or three that I need to do.
So Terry, is this continued violation until she closes them out?
Well, those are closed out.
Right, if they're closed out next year.
Or acceleration.
Next year, if by December 31, they're all incorporated into the county, then I'll be fine with that, I don't think that'll be a violation. Even though it wasn't done until recently, it is in there by the end of the year. And so I'll be fine with that, but it's, fact is, I think it, it is, important thing is it's been turned over now. Because statutes say it's supposed to be turned over, so.
Terry.
Yeah.
I just want to add, do I need to go back seven years on those accounts and review every one of the reconciliations for seven years and?
Let me get to that in a few minutes.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I do want to address that, if I can.
Okay, good.
So, okay, so that has been turned in, I think that's the important thing, that you've done that. And I will address that when we get to the loose letter, if you don't mind, I'll put that aside for now. But, okay, the other thing I did want to point out to you, which is important, on page 12, about your debt, you probably don't remember this, it's been about a year and a half ago, but early 2021, you refunded the county's bonds and resulted in 300 some thousand dollars worth of savings. And you did it in time, because if you tried to do that now, if you hadn't done it and tried to do it now, I doubt you'd save any money. Rates have really gone up and especially municipal rates, but you got that done in time because the rates are starting to really go up. And hopefully, we don't have any major multi-million dollar projects in the county soon because interest rates are a lot higher now than they were a year ago. But I did want to remind you, that was a good thing that happened last year, savings of 300 some thousand dollars. And that's pure savings, that's money that's not going out, that would have gone out if you hadn't done.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks for having me, thank you Patty. It's a very good thing.
Thank you, Susan.
There's more, I could bore you with a lot more of the financial stuff, but I do want to move on. If you go to page 21 and 22, 23, that's the details for each fund, the revenues and expenses compared to budget. Nothing too much to stand out there, but the thing I did want to go back to is page 68. Because this section is the federal compliance section, which is required because of the fact the county received mostly, it's a coronavirus relief money, the 1.4 million you received in 2021. And that triggered a federal audit of the, of the county, because you didn't used to have to have that. But the last two years now, you have because of the coronavirus money you've received. And that schedule on page 68 shows the amounts received, the amounts you spent of federal funds in the past year. And the next two, next four pages are just reports we're required to spell out to you, a lot of verbiage. But I think the key is to go to page 73 and 74, which is the summary of the auditor's results. As I said earlier, we give an opinion on the financial statements, we also test for compliance with Kansas statutes, but we also test for compliance with federal audit regulations, federal regulations that apply to the federal grants you received and spent. This summary on 73 and 74 goes over, oh gosh, we put the wrong page in there, okay. Goes over the findings of the audit. And there was a, one finding this year, which is on page 73, or 74, but the 74 is, is wrong, I'll have to bring you a new page. I just found these yesterday, I'm sorry, I didn't check this. But there was a finding, but the finding is, we already talked about, the fact the bank recs were not done timely early on the year, but by December 31, they're now being done and they're up to date. But since that is an essential thing that should be done every month, and since for those months it wasn't done, I had to actually sign it again. But it does clearly state now that it is being done in a timely manner and that's no longer an issue as of the end of the year. But it did have to be cited, and I have no idea how 74 and 75 are the exact same. But I'll bring you new pages tomorrow, or later today. And then corrective action plan, there really is no corrective action plan, you're now doing it. If it wasn't being done, well, we'd have to talk about it, but it's now being done. And just monitoring should continue to make sure that those are still being prepared each month in a timely manner. So unless you have any specific questions on these, I'll move on to the loose letter. Because there are a couple of things we need to touch on on that. First off, the top of page two, once again, talking about the bank recs, they're now being done. Just important to make sure they're still being done and continue to be done. Got them done now, up to date, keep it up to date. Now, the other things were some issues, I went into a little more detail about the sheriff's funds, those three accounts. And you can see in the middle of page two what the receipts were and the expenses were and the cash balance as of December 31 for the three new accounts. And again, I think they need to be turned over to the county, which I guess they have been now. The thing I wanted to talk about is the top of page three, which you asked about, Patty, about reviewing expenses and receipts for the last.
Yes.
Prior years. Given the fact that it, it wasn't looked at, I would suggest you look at some, at least for a certain amount of time, three years. Seven years is a stat, a basic number, go back, so I threw seven, but that's your call on that. But I do think you should look at them. Again, I didn't see anything with the 2021 expenses, but I don't know about before then. And I would think for you, you'd want to know if that was done right. And the thing about is, these funds and any funds like this should be turned over to the county and run through the normal processing. For, for example, for bidding purposes, if there's a big expense, you can, you can bid it, there's rules for that. Secondly, there are recording, reporting requirements for the federal laws, that if you pay contract labor to someone, you have to send them a form to inform them how much you paid them. Well, everything run through the normal county processes are being picked up, or should be picked up. But if they're not being turned in and run through that process, you might be missing a 1099 that should go out. And that's, and furthermore, it's important to turn in because then you have extra eyes on it. For example, every check written, you're going to have signatures by Patty and Ashley and invoices to support it if, if you know you have all these eyes looking at it. So I think it's important it is turned over and, and I know you aren't doing that now, but you may want to look at a few years back. And you guys can call on that. I said seven, I wouldn't go more than seven, but seven's a standard, but three, five, look at three, if it looks good, maybe go, or just do seven, it's your call on that, but I do think you'd want to look at some. And then the other thing I think I mentioned, maybe send a letter, contact the banks to see if there's any other county accounts that I wouldn't worry about, and I think we've done that now. And I don't think we had anything else that surprised us, right Patty, or was there another one?
Oh, there's some that have different accounts that are using our tax ID number that we were not aware of. I've contacted all of them, asked them to put it under their own.
Right.
Tax ID number.
Those townships or something, or?
One of them was the cemetery district, one was the appraisers groups, for some reason, but going back 15, 20 years ago, set their account up under our tax ID number, that type of thing, and we're working to get that all changed.
Right, you know, like, for example, I'm not sure if this is the case for appraisers, but sometimes the praise, the officers have groups and maybe that year the county, Bourbon County Appraiser was the president for the year, so they opened an account here while they're president and used the county, I'm, I'm just suspecting that's what happened, I've seen that happen with other things, with other clients that have had unknown accounts, but they should have their own. You can get an account number, a tax ID number pretty easily, just go online and get it. But, so anyway, I want to go over that with you and you guys can decide how many years back, you should go back a few years, but that's your discretion. Inmates funds, I've actually had this comment for many years in the audit, if you go back through it, and basically spelling out good, simple internal control procedures that should be followed, spelled out there in the middle of page three. The new thing is the bottom of page three, and that is, this account is, has two purposes. The first is if prisoner is put in jail and has a thousand dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever, you know, he can't keep it in his jail, so the, their inmates funds can hold that money for him. And the second reason for this account is the commissary there, that they can buy toothbrushes or deodorant or things that prisoners might want, and you can sell them to them, you buy them and you sell them to them. At a profit, a little bit of a profit. Well, back in December 2013, that balance had 17,984 in it. And it's kind of grown up to 133,996 of December 2021. I think it's, there's, there's, we need to be prudent about, he needs to access money easily to buy things if he needs to at the correctional center. But I think once you get to a certain level, it seems to me it'd be prudent to have that money turned over to the county. I mean, keep what you need to operate the inmates funds, but then turn it over to the county so once again, the expenses can be tracked, run through the approval process for paying bills, paying contract labor, it'll be picked up. And so I just suggest you, you can decide what a reasonable balance is, but anything over that amount probably should be turned over to the county, just to track.
So this 133,000 is one of the counts that you didn't have know about, Patty?
No, this one, he had talked about previous years, but they've always taken care of it yourself.
Right, we've had this count for years.
Did you track numbers or reconciliation or anything?
No, no.
That's always been theirs, and I mean, it's always gone by, I was never told I needed to.
So, right, why was that one okay for us not to know?
Well. and get it, but, so anyway, I want to go over that with you, and you guys can decide how many years back, you should go back a few years, but that's your, your discretion. Inmates funds, um, I've actually had this comment for many years in the audit, if you go back through it, and basically spelling out good, simple internal control procedures that should be followed, um, spelled out there in the middle of page three. The new thing is the bottom of page three, and that is, um, this account is, has two The first is if prisoner is put in jail and has a thousand dollar, or a hundred dollars, whatever, you know, he can't keep it in his jail, so the, their inmates' funds can hold that money for him. And the second reason for this account is the commissary there, that they can buy toothbrushes or deodorant or things that prisoners might want, and you can sell them to them, you buy them and you sell them to them. At a profit, a little bit of a profit. Well, back in December of two thousand and thirteen, that balance had seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars in it, and it's kind of grown up to a hundred thirty-three nine ninety-six of December two thousand and twenty-one. I think it's, there's, there's, we need to be prudent about that, he needs to access money easily to buy things if he needs to at the correctional center. But I think once you get to a certain level, it seems to me it'd be prudent to have that money turned over to the county. I mean, keep what you need to operate the inmates' funds, but then turn it over to the county, so once again, the expenses can be tracked, um, run through the approval process for paying bills, uh, paying contract labor, um, it'll be picked up, and so I just suggest you, you, you can decide what a reasonable balance is, but anything over that amount probably should be turned over to the county, just to track.
So this hundred and thirty-three thousand is one of the counts that you didn't have know about Patty?
No, this one, he had talked about previous years, but they've always taken care of it yourself.
Right, we've had this count for years.
Did you track numbers or reconciliation or anything?
No, no.
That's always been theirs, and I mean, it's always gone by, I was never told I needed to.
So, right, why was that one okay for us not to know?
Well, number one, you do know about it, and maybe you don't remember, but the commissioners from the past have allowed that to open for two purposes, to track the inmates' money and to buy and sell, um, items through the commissary, and that's been allowed perfectly fine. The difference being that's now built up a bit of a balance, and that's why I think now, um, just especially to track it, make sure you're following the, the, um, reporting requirements that be, that you, after a certain amount, might be turned over. This has been around for years.
Yeah, so, but no one, except Bill was tracking it?
Right, and, well, and we looked at it every year with the audit, but, um, that's why I have these six items in the middle. It's important, since it was being done there, that, you know, it'd be reconciled each month, um, balances tied back to what's held for the inmates in the account, money received, deposited promptly, invoices, checks over five hundred, those are just internal things to be done at that location, um, until
So, so this isn't our money, this is somebody else's money, is that correct?
No, yes and no. The, some of the money is the prisoner's money.
Got it.
Other money is money that you purchased items and sold it to the prisoner, uh, the
So we've, so, so, so we've co-mingled funds?
Well
Is that what we've done?
At first, we got that cleaned up this year.
As long as you're keeping track, I mean, it seems silly to open two bank accounts to, to do it, and as long as you're
I, I, and I don't know if this is probably in the time to talk about it really, but I mean, I guess if I'm an inmate and I get kicked out, I want my money back.
Right.
I mean, I mean, assuming, are they getting it back?
You get it rapidly, once you get out, we have a system in place where you swipe a card and you get it right there, whatever's on your book.
Cool. I mean, I assume that was the case, but, so we've sold over the years a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of stuff. I mean, I know there's some money in there that's probably people that are in the jail right now.
Not, not much.
So the rest of it is like profit, quote unquote, profit?
From phone sales, from commissary sales, from
Is there a rule on how that can be spent?
I think it goes into the county and it's spent by the county, but, um, keep a little there, if you need to buy something right away, you have it, but once it gets to a certain level, it seems to me prudent to turn it into the county.
Okay, thank you.
What we've done in the past, we've bought transport vehicles. Now that we have a new jail and it's five years old, we can use it to purchase, um, kitchen equipment when one of those pricey items goes down. I mean, there's, there's a lot we can do with it for that. When our mats are bad, I just buy new mats, those are a hundred and a hundred and twenty bucks a piece, I mean, it adds up. So, and, and Terry's went over well before I took over, and since I've taken over and,
Sure, I'm not accusing, I just, I'm just trying to understand whose money it is.
I mean, actually, it's revenue.
Got that.
And it can be spent however.
Sure.
Am I correct, Susan?
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be spent by the jail, I would, and I believe with Terry, in his letter, he strongly disagreed with just willy-nilly and, you know, whatever, because
We can all take a trip?
I would think that, Terry, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I would think that that could be, those dollars could be put into the public safety fund to kind of help reduce some of the, the expenses or even tax, taxes that go there, but the, the biggest concern is, is if, if we are buying vehicles, it is subject to certain laws that we have to abide by, so we want to make sure that
Well, you can't, and you can't rely on that figure, because it's not always going to be a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, I mean, I mean, it's taken a few years to build that up, and with the, the, the commissary, um,
Yep.
what, different companies and moving and having more inmates and Eletal here, I mean, it can build, but, you know, once it
It's not like you're making a ton of money out there.
No, and the reason why it was so low at thirteen is that's when we had the budget crunch, and we spent sixty thousand dollars out of it to help get out of the, the rut that the county was in, and it's just slowly built up over that.
You have to stop the thing, now, this is a twelve-year expansion, it's something that's been happening overnight.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm trying to
Right, and with that, we also included
So the public will know that.
We included more inmates, which means more stuff
You're not pulling in a hundred grand a year, let's just say that.
No.
Terry, is this an account that Bill can spend freely alone, it's for his department, of course, without commission approval?
I think it is, but with your approval, I mean, I think it, it is the county's money, and I think you could say, turn it all in right away, except what you're holding for the prisoners. I think in the past, commissioners have said, well, you can keep a balance there just to help in the monthly operations, as long as you're monitoring it, like keeping invoices, two people look at, you're reconciling account, blah, blah, like I have in this letter, but it's your call on that. To me, it seems prudent to keep a little over there just for immediate expenses.
To buy mats, to buy a stove, or whatever.
On the forms, we pay for training.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
The one thing is, is it does need to be turned over to the treasurer monthly, the, the reconciliation, because we have to have that for securities pledge, to know how much money is in the account, so that is, that is a, that is the bare minimum that we, we need to take care of.
Which we started that.
Yeah, you're doing that, yeah.
And the other thing is, um, info reporting, if you're paying anybody there for contract labor, um, you need to be sending them a ten-nine-nine, and I don't think you have the means to track that, whereas the county software tracks that kind of thing.
Right.
So, and, because it's a penal, it's a bad penalty if you don't send out a ten-nine-nine, they, they stick you really hard these days, so we want to make sure we get those reports, those information reports.
As I was trying to comment, though, to make now, a lot of the, we have, as long as inmate-related expenses, for example, like Bobby gave a couple container print machines, it's about twelve years old, everybody had about twenty-seven thousand dollars, that's where that money could come from, you can buy that without us coming up and saying we need twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars. So those are some, as long as it's inmate-related, what Bobby had mentioned, that's what, that's the road that we go down.
And it's your call on this, to me, I think you'd want to monitor it, except for a minute or, but it's your call on that. I mean, obviously, the commissioners in the past said you can have it, and it's been done fine, and it, right, it's been nine, eight, nine years to get to this balance, it's not a hundred thousand a year.
Right.
Uh, maybe twenty thousand a year.
My opinion, all funds should go through the county treasurer, my opinion.
Yeah, and we do get the reconciliation at the end of the month, I think.
We do that, we can avoid violation, maybe.
Right, yeah, we do have that, yes.
But you're calling that, but I do think it's, now, given if, what, when staying there, those six or seven things I have in that letter are being done there, and I think they are, invoices reconciled, keeping track of what the inmates own, but, um, as far as the amount you want to keep there and anything over, that's your call, your call.
Yes, and they can have a running balance, as long as Patty's aware of it, and she
She's, that's the minimum, like Susan mentioned, she needs to know the cash balance so that, you know, that can be factored into her monitoring of securities pledge, because that's
Are those to be done by a certain date in the month of Ashley and Patty, and they have been since, what, June?
This month, I struggle, but, yeah.
December or Jan- uh,
October.
October, maybe?
Yep, I, I still don't have it, but Ashley, I don't think, so, she was working on it yesterday.
But, um, that's really all for this letter, um, another, a lot of verbiage is in it from the past, it's just required, we're right, send you in writing these things, um, you can compare last year's or this year's, a lot of it's the same, just required to tell you about it, but, um, unless you have any specific questions, I would like to take your audits back and replace page seventy-four, and you'll have them next meeting, but other than that, um, I'll, I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Well, I guess the main thing is just to make sure next time we don't have any violations, whatever, whatever we have to do to make that happen, what was it, you know, any advice on specific things?
Yeah, I do, um, to me, I, this is very positive, because, um, we had several years there when the cash was out of balance, and I'm really pleased to see that has been fixed, and that's essential, that that continue to be done, because you need to know how much cash you have in each fund, and if it's not reconciled to the bank, you don't know how much you have, and now you do by the end of the year, and I guess monthly now, it's being done timely, I've not looked at the thing in two thousand and twenty-two, but I trust it is, and, because that's essential. The other findings here, um, you know, you're publishing things now, uh, those statements, the, um, tax distribution was just blurping the software, I don't know what caused it, but it happened, and, um, as long as, pardon me, I don't see a violation next year repeats of these unless something else happens, because the, it looks like you've addressed them that's on here this year, and, um, so that shouldn't be an issue next year.
Yeah, that's good news, Patty, no violation in two thousand and twenty-two.
Well, it's everybody working together, that's what we're getting a lot more help from the sheriff's office, from the clerk's office, Susan's helped us, and that's, it's everybody's work together to do that.
That's what we need to do too, I mean,
Yeah.
we're all in together, I mean.
Exactly.
I mean, this is my county too, I kind of like
Yeah.
doing the audit here and, you know, walking down the street to the meeting rather than driving half an hour, hour away, so it makes it nice, so, I'm glad to come and talk to you today. Now, since I am right down the street, anything comes up, you can, I'll be glad to come back, just let me know.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll take these.
All right, thanks, Terry.
Thank you, guys.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable.
Second.
In discussion, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You hit him, I don't remember where you hit him.
I know, here somewhere.
Knock everything off here. Yeah, thank you. Um, Will has asked me to present his letter of resignation for you. He is going to be retiring December thirtieth of this year due to his health and age, um, or the reasons for his retirement, and he is asking if you would like him to train someone, um, he would be glad to do that, he believes that he has enough monies in the department to support the salary of him as well as to train someone through the end of the year, so that's up to you guys, he just asked if I would present this to you.
Okay, thanks. Do we need to make a motion to accept this or anything, anybody know, or just accept and go on?
Now people can quit on everyone they want, so.
Okay, thank you, Will, for your service.
Yeah, I guess he's stopped here, but he's done a great job.
Are you planning on a little gathering, retirement, go away gathering, or?
Yeah.
I agree. Okay, that it? That it for you?
No, it's just
Ms. Susan Bankroll, chief financial officer, please.
Um, I'm still working on the banking that Clifton had asked me to research, unfortunately, I was out sick last week with influenza, so I didn't have an opportunity to get anything put together, but I will have that for the next meeting. I also will have budget amendments that will be at our December sixth meeting, um, to be approved on the twentieth, I think is my date, because I have to publish them ten days before, so we'll do the, we'll present the amendments on December sixth, publish on the tenth and approve on the twentieth. And then the only other thing that I wanted to kind of discuss was our shared services agreement that we have with the city of Fort Scott. In order to be able to partnership, have a partnership with them, there are several things that have to be looked at. They get ROC in exchange for, um, the amount that we would be paying for either EMS contractual obligations or our IT that we're doing for them, those are the only two that we really are, um, have any kind of a shared relationship now. So we have the dispatch for the sheriff's department, that's paid quarterly, so that wasn't even taken into consideration when I was doing these calculations. In May, we brought EMS back over here, and till October, they were continuing to do some maintenance and fuel for us, and so, um, I had to go through, from May to October, and look at all their bills, um, as far as the fuel that they've purchased, do an average of the, the amount of gas, the average price, so that we could be, make it fair, um, and so that was taken into consideration as well. We have a third truck and, um, at the fire department and EMS dispatch that they also have a contract with us, um, but when our money was funded over at the, the city, um, it was basically county dollars, they were just administering, and we were paying them to administer the program. With those dollars, we helped buy a four-post lift, um, I think it was split into fourths, and so of that amount was sixty-three hundred dollars, and so, um, since they are no longer, and that was done in twenty-one, since they are no longer servicing our vehicles, I took that credit on this shared services so that it made it fair to the county, because we didn't, we don't have access to that piece of equipment anymore. So, um, for this year, our shared services payment will be sixteen thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars. In a normal year, it would be the twenty-five-five, the forty-eight thousand that we spend for EMS, and then the fifty thousand for dispatch, that's normally what we would pay to the city, so, but for this year, we're going to pay the fifty thousand for dispatch and then the sixteen thousand, so, any questions on that?
No.
It's kind of an accounting nightmare when, when we start doing all these trading back and forth, um, because different funds have to reimburse other funds to make it work out.
Sure, if I have a question.
Fifty thousand you rent, I'm going to show you the shares, where does that fifty thousand come from?
General fund.
It doesn't come from the nine-one-one taxes that are collected?
We don't get nine-one-one taxes.
We don't get nine-one-one?
Do we get nine-one-one tax money?
We used to for years, we did.
I thought the city gets
The city gets it all.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand out of
If we do, I don't know where it's going.
No, I don't either, I haven't seen it.
When that change took place, because that was the agreement when dispatch left here, that we would get the nine-one-one funds, and that would, because all nine-one-ones would go through the county, and then the county would send it off to the city.
I recall that
The nine-one-one funds are set, they set at the city of Fort Scott in a separate fund, because it can only be used for, for very specific things, and so it cannot just be for, um, it has to be for like the console that is actually doing the dispatching, it can't be for records management, it can't be, it could be for chairs, but it's very, very specific, and they do hold all those funds that go back into dispatch.
And I agree with Bill, originally, a long, long time ago, the county did receive nine-one-one funds, and we shared it with the city at that time.
Yeah, I think we're talking about two different things, because I think there's a
We could have been.
We don't receive any nine-one-one funds, I know that.
Did we, used to, ten, fifteen years ago?
I don't know, I'd have to go back and look.
I'm just curious.
There used to be, there used to be two different, uh, funding mechanisms for nine-one-one, there was cell phone and there was landline, there's, those have now merged into one, I do know that, so I, I
I think there's an account, an old account in there for nine-one-one.
But we don't receive anything from the, from the state.
I wonder how and why that changed, because at one time, I think we look back in nineteen ninety-seven or eight, you'll see that we might have, Bobby?
At that time, before the city took over dispatch solely, we had a dispatch for the county during the day, and then when Sheriff Coleman and the commission at that time, I'm assuming, made that agreement with the city, they got all the nine-one-one funds, and then we pay them X amount per year for their services.
The nine-one-one fund is supposed to be used to help offset salaries because they needed a second dispatcher.
Well, I can tell you, we're getting quite a bargain, we're getting, we're getting a bargain, it costs them over five hundred thousand dollars to run communications.
Sure, well, I
We're not, we're not, we're not
Yeah.
That's a bargain.
Yeah, my question is, the fifty thousand dollars comes from my budget, right?
It's not coming from your budget, it's coming from the general fund.
Okay, we, we want to thank the city of the shared services.
Yes, yes, any, any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Susan. We have an extra break.
I need one, actually.
I do too, let's go through this guy and take a little break here.
I just ask them, I time be moved to the very end of the agenda, I have an executive session I'll need to go into for I have an executive session I'll need to go into for seven minutes, so.
Make a motion to move Justin's time to the end. Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? On the favor? Aye.
Aye.
I suggest a 10-minute break, please.
I'm better.
Good, good. That's important. Maybe we're going to Pizza Place for a while ago. If you get a chance. Did you? Why, how'd you do that? Thank you. That's cool. Yeah, yeah.
Motion. I'll go sit Nelson. You ready?
Okay. Ashley has presented me a document for his signs. I need a motion, the commission, to allow me that we sign this, that we received the audit from EFB.
Make a motion that, uh, allow Chairman Harris to sign that we received the audit from, uh, Mr. Cercer.
Second.
Any discussion? On the favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Shane Walker.
So Legacy, we've been working with them to transfer all the infrastructure over to them. They're going to have to run on our phones and our internet for probably another 20 days until they get the equipment in. Then I gave them a list that they need to replace. I mean, there's five miles of fiber optic cable in that that Mercy stripped out all the connecting equipment, so they're going to have to order that and get it put in place. And then we'll have them off our system, so.
Okay.
That's eating a lot of time.
I can imagine, so.
So, that's all, that's what we're doing right now.
Thank you, Shane. Okay, public comment section. Morning, Ann.
Yeah, morning. I don't feel like this is far enough. I always complain because I can't see who's at the microphone.
Move it a little more.
A little bit more. If you want on the camera.
Oh, me. This way?
It's, it's about a 30-second delay here.
It's delayed for the, for the people that say a bad word, so we can, you know, just get.
Well, this just feels a little forward. Anyway, um, as, uh, the two of you may recall, last year, when I learned of the violations and all, I, I came back several times and, because I didn't, I still don't quite understand the process for when to ask questions and who to ask them of. So, um, and, and was fully aware at that time that a lot of these violations went back quite a few years. So I am encouraged and I, to see that just right off the bat, there are fewer violations. And I was very pleased to hear Terry talk about, or at least you all confirm, what is being done to fix the current ones. So I'm like you all. I don't want to see any on there, um, next year, barring some sort of disaster. But I do have a, um, bit more of a statement, and just glad to hear that the departments are making an effort to work together so that all this, I believe it's prudent that each department do what they can to be transparent with the citizens that you all serve. I appreciate the efforts of all departments in working towards a more open communication. And I would ask that if there are any trainings that you need to go to, um, especially the department heads, that you've got, you've figured out a way to attend those. You know, election years aren't that far away. And I'll just be honest, I looked into recall on several of your offices to discover what that would take in the last, oh, probably it was nine months ago or so, um, and decided not to pursue that at that time. But election years aren't that far away for your offices. So please, it's, um, more important than ever that the county be above reproach at every level. And I understand laws change all the time, but that's part of the reason you were elected, to do your job with excellence, to benefit this county in going forward and growing. Still see comments about our county dying. I refuse to believe that. I will not believe that. I wish those people would move away. Maybe we would grow faster. So anyway, um, I guess, uh, continue doing all that you can do in your respective departments so that the citizens are assured that you are doing your best effort. Because without you doing your best effort, the county will struggle to go forward, and the citizens will get discouraged. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more.
Okay.
One more. Never mind.
And if you recall, several weeks ago, I encouraged the other electric officials to make sure they get all their personnel, proper training.
Yes.
The commission wants it, I'm sure the elected officials, and if it's offered out there, there's no excuse for not getting training. There's just no excuse.
Correct. I agree. I agree.
Any more public comment? Mr. Walker?
Sure, I had one. It's really minor, but. The public comment I want to make as far as the audit goes is this. People need to understand that it's really important that we come up with no violations because that inhibits our ability to get grants. Because if you have violations, you have less chance to get grants. So when we get that under control, we'll have a better chance to get grants. It's taxpayers' money that's coming back to us. That's a good thing.
Well, we've made great strides since last year Terry was here for the, we got a lot of violations last year, and we've done, didn't do well this year, but it's better.
Well, that audit is on last year.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the year before, just the year before, we had several.
Exactly. We didn't get the audit last year until September or October, so, you know, the year was almost over before we got those, so we should be.
Any other public comment? Mr. Michael Hoyt?
I have only one quick question on the budget. Susan, you alluded to the fact that we were having a banking problem?
No, we've been asked to put our banking out to bed.
No, I, you referred to an issue that the bank, that we had with a bank that we used, that they had more of an issue or violation than we did. How did that come out in the audit?
Securities pledged. That would be in this current year, so it's not been audited yet.
So 2022? I have several questions and comments on the Legacy Agreement. And I would ask that you let me get through my entire presentation before we get into a two-way discussion so we don't get off the track like we did before. You were, last year you chastised us, this commission did, for not knowing Noble. Whenever the citizens on Facebook, I don't care where they were doing it, on the street, were criticizing Noble, you chastised us that we didn't know Noble. We shouldn't be chastising Noble because we had no information on Noble. So I've tried to learn a little bit about Legacy. And if you look at your agreement, the donation agreement, 45 pages, it starts off and it states that the corporate structure for Legacy is a not-for-profit company, not-for-profit corporation. But yet, their charter in California says they're a nonprofit corporation. Big difference. A nonprofit organization makes no money. A not-for-profit organization puts all of its money back into the company to succeed at the, uh, how do they put it? The organizational goals. So those organizational goals can be, we like you, you're going to get a big raise or a big bonus or whatever. Doesn't mean we have to do all benefit of the public. Back in this agreement here, the 45 pages, and I, since the page numbers, there's no page numbers on there, so I can only go back to, I believe it's under Article 1.5, which discusses excluded liabilities. And it means two. Here it is. Execution copy, again, I don't know what page it says, 1.5.1. The donor, or the donee, which would be us, does not assume the following liabilities, I'm sorry, the donee would be them, Legacy, does not assume the following liabilities and obligations of the donor's ready-mix business. What does that mean? Are we making concrete out there? The structure of this agreement says within the first one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year window, if we don't like something, we can get back a million dollars, $750,000, $500,000 in the last year. For fifth year, we can't do anything. But there's no defined milestones. There's no deliverables. There's no explanation as to what would trigger us to ask for that building back and the money. So day one, they're getting away with a million dollars regardless. If, if they show up, take the keys, take the $2 million and go away, the most we can ask, ask for after year two is the building and a million dollars back. But it does not define what the triggers are. There's a number of other, you know, minor typographical errors. Missouri State is listed on one of these pages where that are to be notarized, and it's also dated 2020. So my suspect is, this is probably the Noble Agreement with the name change to Legacy. I don't know. I didn't see the Noble Agreement. Thank you. That's all I have. I, I do have, uh, handouts here. If you have any question as to what the difference between a nonprofit and a not-for-profit, I assure you, there is a big difference. There's no, I mean, I don't see how we're in any different position as far as them receiving a donation of 1.9 million for the building and them not having a tax liability if they are a not-for-profit corporation. A not-for-profit corporation has to specifically be, uh, awarded a tax-exempt status. It's not automatic, like if not, not, not-in-for-profit, which gives you the 501(c)(3) tax exemption. So they're not going to pay property tax, not going to pay sales tax, and if they get the 501(c)(3) under their not-for-profit, there'll be no tax on the building, I guess, as a donation. But I don't, it had, that is not in their charter. And there's also, uh, some. And there's also some regulations where a not-for-profit can have other legal entities, but a not-for-profit cannot. So it's not like they could be not-for-profit over here and nonprofit over here. Is my understanding of the reading. Questions?
Thank you.
The address, the address.
Well, you know, the interestingness in the research we did, the interesting thing is the legacy not-for-profit, or nonprofit charter was just created 9/26/22. To do business in the state, it appears that they have created a business entity called Legacy Strategies, and that was formed 11/21/22. And it doesn't really give their corporate structure here as profit or nonprofit. It's just a limited liability corporation. And happens to be housed in the Eisenhower home in Abilene, Kansas.
Michael, I'm not going to discuss the legal documents with you because our legal counsel prepared those. And I'm confident that we're protected in a way. I won't discuss when Legacy filed their paperwork in Kansas. I don't know what difference that makes compared to the agreement we reached. And you're looking at me funny, but what difference does it make if they signed it thirty days before we give them the building, or two days, as long as it was properly done legally?
I have my driver's license the day before I was sixteen, and I drove the next day.
Well, you mentioned the date, but I'm not here to argue with you. Legacy will soon do more information release. I will say the county was in position. We had to make some decisions with the building. So...
Well, in the day of Noble, we had a town hall meeting at the River Room, and we still got chastised for not knowing Noble. But when, the day this was executed is when we heard that this was even going to happen. So you gave four million dollars of assets away without even telling a single taxpayer that I was aware of. And we have no way of getting anything but a million dollars back in the building.
So does, yeah.
I believe at a later date, we'll discuss this more in detail once. We're not, we're limited what we want to say because we want Legacy to do their own talking and their own news release and press release. And they deserve that. So you brought up Noble two, three times. Has nothing to do with Legacy.
So they're not Noble. So let's just forget about that. Noble delivered, we paid for a study, Noble delivered the study. I don't know what people don't understand about that. Now, they said they were going, they had a press announcement and all this stuff. That's on them. But we, as a county, paid for something and we got that something. So different. If I go to McDonald, I went to McDonald's this morning. I paid for a drink, I got a drink. Now, if I hadn't got, if I'd gotten a medium, I'd have been like, wait a second. Does anyone, I need a, I need a large drink. That's what I paid for. So I'm sick and tired here about Noble. It's not the same company, not even close to the same company.
Well, let's hope it works out that way.
We hope so. We hope so.
A lot of cop.
So now this is my turn to talk, Michael.
Okay. I'm pausing.
We let you talk. You've had your three minutes, or whatever. I mean, but regardless, we paid for a study, we got a study. Did we ever pay for it? Did we do this? It's up for debate. Whatever. As far as Legacy Healthcare Foundation, I'm getting, I have more than one LLC. I'm getting ready to start another one. That's business. If you don't know about business, then you probably shouldn't be talking about it. I mean...
Wait, are you trying to tell me that I don't know about business?
Does he get to talk?
No, we listen to you as completed. You said, please do not interrupt him.
But do not insult him like he's insulted you.
Let him finish talking, please. It's this, we're just, we're going to cut this over.
Yeah, let's do that.
Whether it's a nonprofit or not-for-profit is their business. It's not our business.
Okay, but it is business.
It's their business.
So don't accuse me of not knowing what the difference is.
Maybe I could talk after.
Any further public comments?
I'll let you all go.
What's that? Rob?
Personal comment?
Ah, public comments?
Yeah, we hand them out. Yeah, sure.
Attached, or what Justin's handing out, are two of the three surveys that Ready paid for to get finished. One's a retail study, and then one is a labor study. The housing study, I will get back to you. It's finished as well. It had a typo on the front. And so I don't want anybody accusing the entity for misleading people because there's a typo. So, so anyway, I just want to give this out to you and let you guys read through it. It's a lot of information. The labor study is quite large as well. Susan made a joke this morning that I killed a tree. I probably killed a couple of them with this report. And then the city commission is going to get the same thing as you do next week for them to look over. Took mostly a year to do these studies. A lot of public comment. Surveys were done through businesses, residents, real estate, individuals, and on and on, retail shops. And so I think there's a lot of great information in these. I don't want to go over all three of them because it'd take forever. But anyway, read through these. If you have any questions, please contact me by email, or you can come by my office. That's fine. And anyway, so...
Thank you. I appreciate your hard work.
But, Rob, I'm sorry. What are the first surveys again?
It's a retail study, a labor study, and a housing study. And then, we also, Ready also paid for a sales tax revenue study for specific development we're working on. That's finished. However, that Ready, Ready purchased that. So we, right now, we have the copy of that. I'm not going to pass that on due to the fact that it has information about a development that we're working on with a private company. And so that company has some information in there that they don't want public yet. So, anyway, are there any questions about these studies or the work we've done to get these studies prepared?
I don't have any yet.
Okay.
I'll read them in.
All right.
Thank you, Rob.
And I just want to say that we have worked very hard this past year to do a lot of good things for this county and the people who live here. And, you know, some days, it's very hard for a person like me to, to do what we've done, you yourselves, city commissioners, I mean, elected officials, whatever. You know, we, we, we do our jobs with a higher scrutiny than public, or private individuals in their businesses. And that's fine. That's what we chose to do and, and service to our communities. However, what I want to say is that, you know, I said this before at the city commission, and I'll say it here because I think it needs to be said. Our words have actions attached to them. We can cut up and we can type what we want on Facebook, and we can come at this mic and say everything we want to say. And we can accuse people of doing things wrong. We can accuse companies of doing things wrong. But at the end of the day, your words are not going to hurt that company. Because that company can turn around and say, fine, if you feel that way about me, then I won't come and bring a hundred and fifty jobs to your community. I'll go somewhere else and bring those hundred and fifty jobs. And so that doesn't hurt them. That hurts us. That hurts this community. And that has happened time and time again over the last several years. I've had an individual, and I said this in the city commission meeting, call me, who was going to buy two buildings downtown and bring jobs and investment and pay property tax on buildings that are empty and vacant and improve them. And he said, I'm not coming to a community that is as vile as the one I see on Facebook. Now, what am I supposed to say to that individual? Am I supposed to apologize for the people outside of my organization? My organization is trying to bring new tax dollars to town? My organization is trying to bring jobs to town? That is a fact. That has happened. That happened three months ago. So when you get on Facebook and you get to just go off and say what you want to say, because we all have freedom of speech, thank God we do. But when you get up there and you just state the facts that you feel are true facts, remember, they affect things that could happen that are good and positive in this county. They affect people who sit at home right now and wish they had a job, or wanted, want a better job. And we can't bring those jobs to town because they look on Facebook and they see the negative, vile, just terrible things, and they don't want to come to town. They don't want to come and deal with accusations and false information. And honestly, I don't blame them. I've been accused of a lot of things over the last year, a lot of things. My character's been put into question. My family's character's been put into question. And I'm going to tell you that I have never in my life took a bribe, a back-room deal, or anything to bring a company to a community. Not one time. And so I'm not going to sit here and listen to people say that about me anymore. Because I have the right to say what I want to say too. That's my God-given right as well. I'm American, just like the rest of you. So all I'm going to say is, unless you have the facts, unless you have a picture of me taking a bribe, or unless you can prove it, stop saying things like that. Because they have consequences. I'm not going to deal with it anymore. I've had enough. The projects we're working are going to bring significant, significant amount of development to this community. Development that's never happened before in this community. And since the time it is created, it's going to bring hundreds of jobs to this community. It's going to be something that's positive, not for just this community, but for the entire region on both sides of the state line. But if we keep jumping on Facebook and acting like we're some Wall Street Journal or New York Post reporter that has the scoop, that has the insight on it, and start throwing out false accusations continually, we're going to lose those developments, and then we're going to be back in the same boat we are today, hoping that our assessed value goes up so our taxes can go down. Looking at Allen County and noticing how much they have in assessed value, and complaining why their taxes are so much lower than ours, because they have more money coming in. That's a fact. These, these aren't opinions of mine. These are facts. So, I'm sorry I went off on a rant.
It's all right.
I apologize. But for a year, I've been hearing and reading and seeing this nonsense, and I've had enough. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
I would like to say that just because we set at this table doesn't mean that people go on Facebook and call us thieves. I'm not a thief. I'm not taking kickbacks. I've got text messages from people I don't even know. Mr. Harris, how much money did you get for, you know, number one, I'm not going to prison for anybody. Number two, I love my family. I love Jesus Christ. I'm not going to prison for anything this counter anybody else does. So I want to echo what Rob says. People, come to this meeting and ask us questions. If we can answer them legally, we will. Talk to me face to face. Don't call me a thief because you got a, you're a computer cowboy. If you don't have enough guts to come see me in person, please don't talk about me. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mark McCoy, and I am here to talk and echo just a little bit about Rob Harrington and Ready, Bourbon County Regional Economic Development. I am honored to be on a number of boards in Bourbon County. This one, I've recently been asked to chair due to some changes in it. I have worked with Rob since he came. And I know that he is a very, very dedicated, hard-working person who cares dearly about this community. But I wanted to tell you that there's eleven other individuals that serve on that board, plus myself, that are very concerned about Bourbon County. And we're all trying to do the right thing. We are all citizen servants like you are. You know, none of us here are individuals who grew up saying, I want to be this, that, or the other thing. But we're trying to make Bourbon County better. We talked about a meeting the other, the other week. I'm not here to attack anybody. I'm helped to understand, seek first to understand. I failed to do that last week and probably spoke too harshly to one of you commissioners. I would love to comment more in regards to economic development. But you gentlemen know, and the public may know or may not know, that many of these things cannot be discussed in the public eye because a business entity is not at liberty to discuss those, nor do they want to. I had the same conversation with individuals here when Mercy decided to leave. Some individuals said, why didn't you give us more notice? And I can tell you, having worked for a relatively large corporation for twenty-seven years, you don't, I don't play cards. So what is that? You don't, you don't show your hand, whether it's positive or negative, in such a way. When you get to the point where you can market and merchandise and advertise the heck out of something and make it work, that's when you do it. But when you don't, you keep it close to your chest and you keep your cards covered up because it's the right thing to do. And too many businesses have failed here. And some of those at the behest of people who have maybe attacked them. And so I would ask our public to graciously consider being more optimistic, more positive, more enlightening to the fact that we, together as a county, can work together and go forward. That means the county commissioners, the city commissioners, all of us working together. It doesn't mean in lockstep. That's not what I'm saying. But we, I believe that for us to thrive, for us to be successful as a, as an entire community, the entire county, we have to work more collaboratively so that we're still thriving and surviving and succeeding in 2030. And Ready is here with a lot of volunteers and a very small staff that works very hard, not only as the county economic development director, but the city economic development director and a grant writer who has thirteen grants she's trying to work on. That is, that is beyond the realm of comprehension for someone to try to assist and write and present in a timely manner. Anyhow, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the job that you do, and have a great day.
Thank you.
On a lighter note, natural disasters tomorrow. I want to remind everybody, the flood plane meeting from 2:00 to 6:30 at the hospital in the McColling Room. Everybody's encouraged to attend. The maps have changed. So there will be some people who, well, I already sent letters to the people who are affected negatively. But there are going to be some people tomorrow that are probably going to leave their habits. So, in fact, I know there are because I've got a list of the addresses. But I'm going to let them tell them, not me, just in case it changes. So I don't want any liability there. But you're all encouraged to come. You know, you might, I didn't know if you all show up at the same time, if you need to say something about, you know, you'll be there with no business, you know, whatever on that. So just a reminder that that's tomorrow, and it's really your only chance. So that's all I've got.
Question, comments?
I just, our cellphone numbers are pretty easy to find. I know Ashley has given mine, or maybe not Ashley, but the clerk, and she has my permission, by the way, to give it out. And I know they have. And I echo what Rob and Jim said. But I also go, so, I mean, find out the facts. Because a lot of it on Facebook, and I followed all the threads, but not all of them, but most of them, to see what people were saying. It's a lot of untruths. And I echo what Jim says. I mean, if you're going to call me a thief, or Jim or Nelson thieves, at least do it to our face. You know, but, and some of those, and honestly, I didn't know any of those of those people, except for one. One I would actually have considered a friend. Find out the facts. It's not that hard. And bullying, we teach our kids, at least I teach my kids, not to bully. Maybe those on Facebook don't. But that's nothing more than bullying, which is a, which is, uh, rampant across the country. There's teenage kids committing suicide because of social media bullying. So I guess if I was an adult, I would think about that before I post some of that stuff, probably. But here's nothing more than a bully, um, in my opinion. So, um, you know, find the facts. Call me. Call Nelson. Call Jim. Our cellphone numbers are pretty easy to get. Anyway, that's all I got. I'm gonna make a motion.
I got one more minute. I don't know how many times I've encouraged folks to come to our meetings, time after time after time. I begged the public get involved. And I'm gonna, I was getting mad with Rob a while ago, and I apologize, I don't do that very often, apologize for, I was getting angry too. But I'm gonna sit here and tell those people that's on Facebook calling us thieves that don't even know me, they're cowards. They're cowards, they're, they're keyboard cowards. Come to this meeting, and we'll answer their questions. But please, call me a thief to my face. That's all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Justin, Justin. Okay, what's you wanted for?
Uh, it's attorney-client privilege, um.
How long?
10 minutes.
Okay.
It deals with personnel issues, then also there's some duality. It also deals with contract with that personnel issue, so it's.
Consultation with attorney, so consultation with attorney, public fiduciary being privileged, attorney-client relationship?
Yes, absolutely.
Make a motion to go into KSA Executive Session, KSA 754319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship for, as said by Counselor Meeks, be three commissioners. Justin Meeks will leave this room, we'll turn here at 10:22.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.